Welcome to the board's work-study session. As you might notice, President Sullivan is not here, so I am filling in for her. I have a script, so it should be okay, but if I screw up, I'm apologizing in advance. Let me read the perfunctory announcement. We are live captioning our meetings. Please look at the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with a live captioning. And with that, I will call this meeting to order. For the record, let's note who is in attendance, and I will start with, and we'll do a roll call even though the script doesn't say that. We're going to do it anyhow. Let me start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Dr. Narini.
Present.
Oh, Ms. Butler. I'm sorry, it was not intentional. President Sullivan and Board Member Smith are not with us this evening, and I am present as well. Our agenda talk starts with the presentation of the 2024 legislative agenda. And Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce Ms. Armour and company, right?
She assures me that she's the only one presenting today, though. Mrs. Bitter Smith and members of the board, we're here to, excuse me, to share our 2024 draft legislative agenda that has been developed through a process, and I'm sure Ms. Armour will discuss briefly what that process entailed, but it's had many voices and opportunities for others to see before we bring it to you today for your review. So Lauren is our Director of Government Relations and, or excuse me, Government Relations and External Relations. So Lauren.
Lauren, please.
Is this on? Great. Board Member Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Lauren Armour. As Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, I am the Director of Government Relations. I'm here today to give you an overview, though it might seem premature, shockingly it is not, of our 2024 legislative agenda. We like to have our decks well in a row before we get to January and make sure you all have had time to kind of digest where we're headed as well. As Dr. Gonzalez referenced, we, this agenda has been put through its typical process. We had to sort of expedite things a bit this year because the legislative session went on longer than is typical, and even our most critical issue really dragged on to the bitter end almost this year. There were a few issues that went all the way to August. Thankfully, we weren't in that boat, but we did have to sort of hit the brakes on thinking about next year until we got last year's, I guess this year's process completed. Next slide. So speaking of this previous year, we had some really important successes from our 2023 agenda to highlight now. I apologize, I just realized I forgot to put the board item, agenda item from last year that these were referencing. I'll get those to you. The most important and the issue that we spent the most time on in the 2023 session was the two-year penalty reprieve from expenditure limitation overages. That was absolutely critical to the district's continued financial operation. So unfortunately, it was a bit of a knock-down, drag-out fight, but all's well that ends well. We have two years of relief, which is enough time for us to make some decisions about where our future leads with the expenditure limitation. So the great news is I don't have to do it next year, so you won't see that as a key priority this coming year. Another great success was getting dual enrollment tuition support funds secured. That program is rolling out now. I was asking for a few statistics about where we might be with enrollment, and they weren't quite ready to talk about, but there will be an opportunity in the near future for me to share how successful that is already and how many students are benefiting from that dual enrollment funding already. And we're excited to see where that program goes. And finally, on the, not the state level, but the federal level, we've had a successful application for a federal community project funding dollars to support semiconductor infrastructure. That's not done until the federal budget is done at the end of the year, but you have to go through quite a few hurdles just to be in contention at the end of the process. And we're there, things look good and like they're on track. So I tentatively put that in our success category, and we'll have updates on that as they come. Next slide. Oh, it looks like maybe we have the same one twice. Next one. Oh, I see. So yes, for putting together the agenda each year, there's an internal process and a timeline that we follow. This was my first time going through the process. I've been here almost a year. I came in just as the other, as the agenda was approved last year. So this was my first time really taking it start to finish. In August, we convened an internal task force from all of the corners of Maricopa, and we had two dedicated meetings, a couple hours each, to really just going through line by line our agenda from last year and bringing it into what we needed for this year, making sure our priorities were still encompassed and the things that we have on the horizon were brought into the fold. In September, I presented that more refined version to our board's Public Affairs Committee for feedback. And what you'll see today incorporates some of your feedback, you'll see not all, because we had a very, very quick turnaround from that point to get it on the agenda today. So it's worth noting that this is still a draft. I'm looking for your input and open to make continued changes at this point. Today, of course, we're in a work session to discuss this. At the October regular meeting, the board will vote to approve the agenda with those changes in mind. And in November, we will hit the ground running, taking legislator meetings and making sure those priorities are stated loud and clear to our partners. Next slide. All right, so the goals of this agenda each year are to state our general positions and guidance to allow our team to respond quickly, so we don't have to come to you on every little strategy decision and sort of say, hey, is this something that aligns with our priorities when we know that it does? Doesn't mean we won't come to you on particular issues if things get sticky, but it does mean that on the big stuff, we were able to just sort of take the reins and quickly respond as needed. We have bi-weekly meetings with the board's Public Affairs Committee to keep these priorities on track and up to speed with you all. We have ongoing communication with board members. You saw lots of that this last session with the expenditure limitation conversation in particular, because it was so, such a long process and had so many ups and downs throughout it. So you're well accustomed to seeing those emails from me at this point. We're working on enhanced college president and just college in general engagement. That's a big priority of mine as I enter my second year in this role, making sure lines of communication to our colleges, getting their priorities, that that's well in place, that they know to call me when they need something and that I have easy access to them when I have questions, which I often do. They're the experts. And of course, continuing the positive state and federal government momentum with the many partners and friends that we've made over our many years operating here. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to, this is verbatim from the document that was shared with all of you. We're going to go one by one through the recommended items on our agenda. And again, this is a draft. I'm very open to feedback, so please feel free to, I don't know if you want to write down your thoughts as we go through or interject. I'm fine either way and happy to facilitate. The first item on our agenda this year, oh, quickly, I should have made a note of this earlier. In years past, the agenda has been divided into state priorities and federal priorities. I, along with the task force, discussed and made the decision to make it one large list this year. I didn't find there was a lot of principal difference in a lot of these categories between state or federal in terms of priority or where we did the work. A lot of them have a good deal of overlap. Maybe as we look to the future and editing this document further, maybe there's sort of a combined and then state, and then, you know, maybe we think about how we do that in the future. But as it stands right now, I think it makes sense to sort of state our objectives more broadly.
And Lauren, to your question about taking questions, is the board comfortable if she goes through the presentation, then we come back with Q and A?
Fine by me. All right. Our first recommendation, recommended agenda item is support funding and necessary statutory changes to expand programs and scholarship opportunities for pre-K through 12 teacher preparation programs. This will become particularly relevant this year because of the Arizona Teachers Academy. We have, now that we're rolling out our bachelor's degrees, we have a bit of a gap in the law where those are not currently encompassed in the funding stream for the Arizona Teachers Academy, though they are at other higher education institutions, which puts us at a disadvantage. So we have language developed to go and solve that problem, but of course, it's also just a more general priority of ours to support that in whatever form we can. Next. The second recommendation is enhance early college pathways such as dual enrollment, including tuition support and incentives for qualified high school teachers to provide college-level instruction. Again, this one hits the nail on the head for one of our priorities this year of getting continued funding for that dual enrollment tuition support that we successfully secured last session. Next. Number three, maintain the permanent funding restoration of the STEM and workforce development formula. Support the restoration of the operational formula for community colleges and promote other investments to develop and expand programs in high-demand occupational areas. There is a whole lot in number three that is very, very important to us. The STEM and workforce development formula came to about $8 million last year, and we expect a figure in the same range this coming year. And supporting the restoration of the operational formula of community colleges has now happened for everyone but Maricopa, I am sorry to say. So we will be beating that drum hard and loud at every opportunity this coming session. Next up. Number four, promote student success and increase enrollment, retention and completion by supporting student access to affordable housing, food and basic needs supports, technology, broadband internet, transportation, textbooks and learning materials and childcare. I'm hopeful we'll see lots of bills on these issues that we can throw our support behind this session. You never know. Next up. Number five, support investments that increase student enrollment in short-term workforce-driven credential programs and drive workforce reskilling and upskilling efforts. We are working on specific legislative asks, particularly in the state budget, that will support those investments from the state. The state and its many entities and lots of legislators as well are very excited about those short-term workforce-driven credential-type programs. We're also working on having them recognized as courses, really, for the purposes of the state formula. And that's always part of the discussion as well, so that we get some additional funding for those. They're not just things we're asked to stand up to meet a need. They're something we get a little bit of benefit for as well internally. Next up. Number six, support expanded scholarship opportunities for community college students, including early college and dual enrollment programs to enhance college access awareness and preparedness for underserved student populations and assist students in taking the necessary steps to access scholarship funds wherever we can find them. We developed a whole new scholarship program through legislation last year. This guy's sort of the limit on this one, and we find there's lots of support for student scholarship opportunities, but we have to seize them where we see them as well. Next up. Number seven, support adjustments to Proposition 207, the Smart and Safe Act, and Proposition 301, the six-tenths cent sales tax that are beneficial to community colleges and workforce development. Those issues are not especially likely to, I haven't heard anything about those specifically being reevaluated at this time, but if we see opportunities, we'll certainly weigh in in our favor. Next up. Number eight, support investments in small business development and entrepreneurial incubators, such as the Arizona Small Business Development Center and the Center for Entrepreneurial Innovation to help launch, grow and sustain small businesses in Arizona and generate more economic growth. Support state investment in the SBDC network that will facilitate accessing federal matching dollars. That last line is new this year, and that's because it states plainly one of our priorities this year is to get in the state budget some funding that will allow us to maximize our federal matching dollars. Right now, we, as a state, are leaving money on the table when small business needs it. And so we're going to work on that effort, I believe, in collaboration with our partners at AC4, and we're really looking forward to it because we know that the SBDC has proven results in growing key business services and small businesses in our state. Next up. Number nine, preserve baccalaureate degree authority at community colleges, including the maintenance of local decision-making and local governance of these programs and reduce barriers to growing these programs. This, of course, was a key priority of ours in years past, prior to my position in this role, was getting that baccalaureate authority, and of course, maintaining it is easier than getting it, but never a guarantee. We have to be vigilant in making sure to, yeah, keep growing in the ways that we see as sustainable and valuable. Next up. Number 10, protect and expand local district authority and governance in the administration of the colleges. I think that one sort of speaks for itself. I hope, I hope we don't have to work too hard on that one. I hope it's a bit of a given, but you never know. Next one. Number 11, support the district's ability to pursue revenue-generating strategies that promote self-sustaining operations and ensure student tuition and fees are able to remain low. Same vein as 10, but a little different, really focusing on one of our primary objectives, which is that low student cost, one of the real values that we at Maricopa pride ourselves on. Next. Number 12, support policies that protect staff and faculty, both academically and professionally. Always part of our mandate. And again, I hope it's one that we don't have to work too hard at, but we're there if we do need to. Next up. Number 13, support policies that safeguard student engagement and participation in community college classes, activities and programs. I think that one really speaks for itself as much as any can. It's very important that we do it, and I hope, I hope it's just a given. Next up. 14, support efforts to expand opportunities for students to enroll in community college courses through early college co-enrollment, dual enrollment partnerships and prior learning assessment, including policy and budgetary incentives to enhance the early college instructor pipeline. So that has both the student and instructor element to it, and we know what the results are when we get in early for that pipeline, and they're extraordinary. So making sure we support that wherever we can is a key recommendation. Next one. 15, preserve and expand investments in community college adult education programs and maintain primacy of the community colleges as providers of high school equivalency programs. Promote policies supporting these programs. Certainly relates to the funding issue mentioned earlier in the agenda, but is its own sort of maintenance issue as well. I hope, yeah, I hope it's very clear that we are primary in those investments, but we'll keep that going as much as we can. Next up. 16, support efforts to modernize the outdated community college expenditure limitation formula to better align with the actual costs of programs. I had spoken with the PAC about potentially removing this item now that we have two years of relief under our belt. As your legislative liaison, I never rest easy on these kinds of things. You know, I hope that that won't be rolled back or something like it, but I don't think it, as I discussed it, and whether to the pros and cons of including or removing it, I figured we'd bring it to all of you for discussion to see what you thought and what the advantages and disadvantages might be to kind of stating that out loud as a priority right now. Next on the list. Number 17, monitor funding opportunities that support students in colleges through pandemic recovery and work to ensure effective support programs with ongoing value do not terminate at the end of federal financial support. This is one that looks different than it did last year. Last year, it was about accessing and utilizing pandemic-related funds. As we're seeing the sunset on a lot of those funds, what's becoming more important is making sure that the programs that they currently support, if they have ongoing value, that they don't just disappear because the money's gone, that we find other pathways for those to keep going. If anyone out there has suggestions about programs we can find support for, please reach out to me. I'm eager to get a comprehensive list of maybe at-risk programs in Maricopa that we can find other funds for. Next. Number 18, support the development of a dedicated community college job training program and the bolstering of other workforce-focused state and federal programs, such as Career and Technical Education, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA, the Adult Education and Family Literacy Act, AFLA, as well as tax incentives for job training programs. We're always looking for support and funds for those issues. Next. 19, support changes to Pell Grants that enhance student access and minimize operational inefficiencies, such as the ending of taxation of Pell Grants, increasing the maximum award for full- and part-time students and allowing the use of Pell Grants for non-full-time programs. These are all still ongoing goals and ones that have been sought to be changed by legislation, both at the state and federal level, and haven't yet succeeded. They all seem pretty easy to support, in my opinion, but that doesn't mean a whole lot, so we'll keep working on it. I think Pell is a big discussion, big point of discussion right now. I hope there's opportunity to make some improvements this coming year. Number 20, support investments in enhancing college access affordability, enrollment and essential student support supports to promote completion, such as the creation of tuition-free community college and the promotion of validated college-saving programs such as Earn to Learn. Several of our programs in this vein have already been recognized, but whatever we can do to enhance them and perhaps expand, roll out some more, well, we'll be there looking for the opportunity. Next. 21, strengthen resources to Hispanic-serving institutions and minority-serving institutions. A key priority of ours across the board, but more and more all the time. Next. 22, submit requests to Arizona's Congressional Delegation for Community Project Funding to develop and enhance student access to programs in the highest need workforce areas in the state and the nation. This has been, as I mentioned, it's been a success of ours this year. It's something I hope to continue to see success in, and we have amazing congressional partners who are really, who really work collaboratively with us to put together good asks. But we got one this year, I'm pushing for two this coming year, so I've pluralized it. Next up. Number 23, support state and federal policies and investments that enhance student access to vital basic need services that increase both enrollment and completion for students. This leans a little more on the federal side than the previous one about student resources. Always looking for opportunities there. Next. Protect and expand local district authority and governance, minimize administrative barriers and bureaucracies in federal compliance, policy rules and regulations that support and protect students, staff and faculty academically and professionally, including the modernization of federal data collection processes. This is sort of, this is a little bit more behind-the-scenes work, but it's something we've had success in advocating directly to both state and federal agencies about it, and there's still need for improvement, so we'll keep that effort up. Next. And that's our list. 24, pretty high, high-impact, high-value items, if you ask me. I am open to any questions, suggestions or thoughts at this time.
So as Lauren mentioned, this is a very comprehensive list to anticipate things that may or may not happen, but to have guidance for our crack government relations team and the board as they communicate with legislators. So if other questions, comments, I think I'll just go down the row if that's okay, and let me start with someone who knows that process well, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, my only comment to this process is just that I don't think we talk enough about the cuts in operational funding that happened in 2015, and that was before my tenure at the legislature. And I don't even know that many legislators know that the impact of those cuts, and I believe it's in the range of, it was like $69, $70 million a year that was cut from our operational funding. And so I just, as we're looking at this, and the colleges have obviously done a wonderful job of overcoming that and mitigating that, you know, those damaging cuts. But boy, I just, I hope that, you know, that we can take really seriously that agenda item to try to get that operational funding restored, and I appreciate the entire presentation and the work that's gone into this.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Just a quick bit of context on that. While we are fighting the expenditure limitation, those operational funds are under that expenditure limit. So unfortunately, we could get them all we'd like, but whether we could use them right now is an open question. So next session, that will be top of our list of discussion, but with other priorities in tow, we don't want to, we'll be there talking about it, but we're not going to make it our number one goal because it won't benefit us as much as it will in future years.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marini.
Yeah, this spurred more, I'm glad Ms. Sullivan's not here, she accused me of getting in the weeds.
She's probably listening, though.
It spurred lots of ideas and stuff. I mean, some of the things that were covered, I know there's going to be big changes to FAFSA. We need to look at those. We need to make sure that we're ready for those changes.
Yes.
And even some of the funding to do FAFSA completions, because we know that students who complete a FAFSA are more likely to persist and graduate and all that sort of thing. And there's a lot of mention on early college and those programs, which I think is great. I mean, they're the only ones that we were up in during the pandemic, right? And, but I don't think as a board, we really know enough about what they do. And I mean, I know this probably doesn't relate to this, but I would love to have a work session where we could have some of them come in and tell us exactly what they're doing and some of the needs that they have, because we're just presuming some of the needs, I think, and they have some specific wants and asks that I think can really enhance, you know, whether it's dual enrollment, whether it's ACE, whether it's HOP of Learning, whether it's any of those programs, you know, whatever happened at our high schools, the two high schools. The other thing on number 20, about the tuition-free community college, can we add tuition and fees free?
How did I know you were going to say that, Dr. Marini?
Yeah, just add that up to it. But yeah, so those are all the things that I had with this. There's lots of stuff we can do if we have the resources and we get the support, because like I said, especially with FAFSA and what's in the changes that they're making, I don't think are going to benefit our students all that much.
Yes. Again, I have a little context to offer you, Dr. Narini. On the FAFSA, we're watching closely the changes to that, but we're also very aware that FAFSA isn't something that helps all student populations. So I actually, with our task force, took out specific reference to the FAFSA and changed the language to broadening any pathway to access scholarship funds, hoping that we can be aware that that is not a silver bullet, the FAFSA alone. We need to figure out some other options for our, to help all of our students.
Yeah, especially with now, you know, with DACA the way it is, and more and more of our students are just being undocumented. I know with the universities, they're looking at the college profile to assess, you know, the student's need, which is, if anybody's ever filled out one of those, it's not fun.
No.
It makes FAFSA look like a walk in the park. But so if we can find a way to help support some of those students, because a DACA student can't fill out a FAFSA, they just can't get federal aid, or undocumented students can't even fill out a FAFSA.
Right.
But we need to identify their need. Texas, Washington all have TAFSA's and WAFSA's, their own version of the FAFSA, so that we can demonstrate a need for students who can't do it with these programs.
We hope we're headed in that direction as well and supporting it. It's a little clunky, but we're working on it.
I don't think President Sullivan would have been too unhappy with you.
I think you're still saying.
Dr. Thor.
On recommendation three, which you referenced that Maricopa is the only district that has not been restored to the operational formula for community colleges. That means that Pima has been?
So they, Dr. Thor, Pima was restored on a one-year basis in in the most recent budget, uh, as part of just the very last-minute negotiations. Um, not in an ongoing way, but as we all know, once you get it once at the legislature, it's a whole lot easier to get it on an ongoing basis. So this year, this, or I guess this coming cycle, yes, everyone but us is, is restored to full MNO.
And, uh, to follow up your earlier comment to Ms. Butler, they were able to accept, uh, operational funding because they have addressed their expenditure limitation issue.
Correct. They're not up against it in the same way as us at this time.
I see. Didn't, didn't know that about Pima. Well, good for them. Um, I did want to comment then on recommendation sixteen about supporting efforts to modernize the outdated community college expenditure limitation formula. Uh, I think I weigh in on keeping something in here. Uh, simply because, uh, there may be a move towards a statewide initiative of some kind. There may be a miracle happens and we find a way for the legislature to address this in a manner that's constitutional. So I think to be silent about expenditure. Well, and the other thing is that legislators will, uh, be aware, uh, that we may be moving towards a ballot initiative in fall twenty twenty-four. And to not have this item included somewhere on our priorities would seem odd.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Um, that's very shrewd because, um, it is very possible that one of the other colleges will, we very quickly kind of came on the conclusion that we were going to run up against it. It's possible another college will as well and will be in our position that we were about a year ago, deciding whether to run a bill or not, and would we support that at that time is, is a decision we may have to make in the coming weeks or months.
And that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Davis.
My comment, um, Lauren, is, kind of has nothing to do with some of this recommendation stuff, but in recommendation number four, where it talks about the basic needs for students. On my way here, listening to a podcast about, um, the, the federal budget and perhaps the government shutdown, is that going to affect our students? Does anybody know? Will it affect Pell Grants or anything like that, that they?
Uh, Ms. Davis, I don't personally know the answer to that question from what I've just read in my, you know, about this in a more general sense. I know a lot of like processing kinds of things are going to be impacted. I would imagine that could apply to scholarship, uh, very easily, but I don't know that for a fact. I will get you some more information.
Okay. And Lauren, Dr. Gonzalez, is there someone that, that's in the room that could answer that question?
I was thinking the same thing, um, because I, I can't answer that question myself. And we've experienced government shutdowns, uh, recently, and I, and I can't think of how it may have impacted our services or students having access to things like federal financial aid. Um, but we can find that out and get a, a good answer for all of you as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, you know, my point was, we better, we better hurry up and, and get more supplies to those food banks and clothing banks and some childcare resources and all that kind of stuff. Because if this happens, our students could be in some bad places.
Very true.
Is what I'm afraid of. And then I also would like to comment on, um, number, uh, sixteen, the efforts to modernize the outdated community college expenditure limitation. I'm with Dr. Thor. I would say that we should keep it in here because despite what we may think, I was in a meeting, um, with the Greater Phoenix Chamber, and we were reviewing their legislative agenda. And somebody in that meeting asked, isn't the community college going to go for anything on this bit? Shouldn't we put in our language that we need to support what the community college is going to do? And the poor community college person was like, well, I don't know that they have definitely decided that yet. So it's out there. People know. So we need to keep it in here because we can't keep denying that we're talking about it. So.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Davis, I'm, uh, having those conversations routinely of, you know, last year you were all about the expenditure limitation. Where are we on that as a minimum? So the latitude to just have those conversations of the moment that at least Maricopa is at, if not our nine counterparts, um, that latitude is, is very important.
And that's all I have, Lauren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Burnett.
Um, Ms. Armour, that great presentation. Thanks. I just had a couple on number four, number eleven. Um, I get very excited when I see things like that. Um, increased retention enrollment by supporting affordable housing, basic needs, technology, internet, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I've always been curious about it. I wanted to talk, talk to, um, Dr. Gonzalez about it as well. The, um, affordable housing, transportation, what, this may be a juvenile question, but what does that look like? Because I think our, our schools do a pretty good job right now with supporting students on basic needs, but some of the things that we don't think about are how they get to and from. Where do they live? Are they on the street? Um, how do they get to class? Where do they go when they leave class? You know, are they fed? That kind of thing. And I'm curious what that would look like sort of in a, a real-world example.
Yeah, Mr. Burnett, that, that issue is complicated by the fact that it's usually a conversation with our city partners. Um, and usually, at least my understanding, often a partnership between the colleges and the city, um, if we're able to, to support that. That being said, state funding could go a long way for something like that. I don't know that we're in a moment where that's especially likely, but we'll be there talking about it.
Okay. And, and on number eleven, uh, the, uh, ability to pursue revenue-generating strategies, again, one of my, um, favorite topics of making us a wildly profitable district where we just have money pouring out of the seams. I, I've always thought that would just be fantastic if we could find a way to use college resources to create revenues. Could you give me just your thoughts on what that looks like in a real-world example?
Well, uh, Mr. Burnett, I think our colleges do a pretty good job of trying to find opportunities for that. I'll give you an example, um, of where sometimes it gets a little tricky. Um, we recently had outreach from Senator Sinema's office. She'd like to utilize some of our Phoenix College classrooms for a series of interviews that she's doing that are really important. Um, ordinarily, we charge for that sort of thing. But because of, she was, because of the program that it's supporting, she was able to put in a particular, uh, application that made that free for her to utilize for that, for that program, which it's supporting an important, uh, federal priority. So, um, I think that the, yeah, the opportunities are there. I don't know that they're always, um,
Utilized.
Maximalized, maximized in a, uh, I don't know, in a, in a, in the most robust way. Uh, but I think it's usually for good reasons when they're not.
Got it. Understood.
Uh, from, like, I, I couldn't give you a comprehensive overview, but, and I don't have any points where I'm like, oh, I wish we were doing a better job here, here, and here, but we'll be looking for them.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Armour.
Any other further questions for Lauren? If not, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Lauren and the rest of the GR team and to the board for all of the hard work that happened during this last very lengthy legislative session, uh, which is leading up to the new agenda, which we will vote on in a final format at our meeting in October. Um, but it doesn't mean just because we worked hard last session, and we're going to be working doubly hard probably next session. So this document becomes really an operational, um, uh, road path for, um, all of us to follow. So if there are no further questions, Lauren, thank you very much. We look forward to the next event that's happening in your life, hopefully really soon for you.
Yes. But thank you, Ms. Better Smith. This was kind of my last, uh, major work hurdle. Uh, and so I'm assuming now that this is done, I'll relax. She'll be here tomorrow. We're, we're off to the races.
She's a good planner. I'm sure that probably will exactly happen. So, uh, so with that, I will adjourn the work-study session, and we'll be in recess till six-thirty. We will go into the regular board meeting. It is that time, and I have the perfunctory announcement to remind folks, we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window, the WebEx meeting, where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. And having done that, at this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. And for the record, I will now call a roll of board members. Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith. President Sullivan. Dr. Thor.
Present.
And I am here myself. So with that, we have a quorum, and I will ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Burnett's going to lead us.
According to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. We have one substitution. Dr. Greg Pereira, the Vice President of Student Affairs, is here for President Kate Smith. Um, with that, unless I've missed a substitution, I don't think so. Good. Uh, let's move on to our student life reports. And I'd like to welcome students from Scottsdale Community College from my great governing board district. Uh, the students here. And ladies and gentlemen, if you would introduce yourselves, welcome to the board meeting.
Hi there. Thank you for having us. I'd like to, uh, acknowledge Presidents, uh, Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and guests. My name is James Delzo. I'm the chairman for Student Council Leader at Scottsdale Community College. So we are, next slide, please. What is the Council of Student Leadership? So we are a governing board that looks over the students. We run clubs. We help fund them. We help be leaders and acknowledge what's going around the school. We like to present to everyone and see what kind of events, and we like to have feedback back if it'll be a good, um, event or whatnot. And we also just cover almost anything in a leader position, and we like to influence the school to participate within. Next slide, please. So I'm the chairman, James Delzo. Our vice chair, Scott Murphy, and our special events manager is Justine Lynn. Next slide, please. Um, our student-at-large is Harrison Scrotier, Brian Skolman, Adrian Felix, and Ben Kaplan. Amber Affanitis is our advisor. She's an amazing advisor, and I am so happy to have her on the team. Next slide, please. And I will also hand this over to Scott so he can present this aspect of it.
Uh, so I'm a returning member of CSL, and I just want to run over some of the amazing events we did last year. So we had Artichoke Pride Week, which was a great opportunity for students to engage with S E C. We had plenty of events there, one of which was Artie Idol, which had dozens of students in attendance and was some of the most in student engagement I've seen. Uh, we had the Club Fair, which was a great opportunity for students to see what the clubs that we have to offer are. We had the Murder Mystery Fundraiser, which was really fun and had a lot of students attend. Uh, we had the Prada del Sol Parade, which was an opportunity for tens of thousands of people to see S E C. We had the Leadership Luncheon, which was a great opportunity for the club leaders to meet with the college leaders. We had the Club Recognition Luncheon, which was, which was great for the clubs to be recognized for all that they do. We also had many fundraising and volunteering events, as well as attending the governing board presentation, which we are doing now. Next slide, please. So some of our goals for this semester is listen more to students. S E C is very focused on the student voice, and we want to make sure we listen to all, not just those in clubs. We want to make sure we give back to the community. Everyone, they didn't have, people didn't have to go to S E C, and it's great that they chose specifically us, and we really want to acknowledge them for that. We want to enhance our leadership series. Justine will speak a little bit more about that, which is something new that we are doing this semester. Uh, and we also, we want to do more student events, which, and student engagement is very important. And those events that we did last year, we're, we're hoping to continue some of them and always improve. Going to hand it over to Justine, our special events manager now.
Okay. Hello, I'm Justine. Oh, thank you so much. All right. So we're going to do four new events for this year. We got Artichoke Spirit Week. It used to be Artichoke Pride Week, but we got name changed, and it will be bigger and better. Yeah, and we're going to get more students to engage and improve our community. We're also doing the Leadership Workshop, and it's open to everyone. We invited our expertise faculties to teach our students such as literacy one-on-one, civic one-on-one, to enhance our leadership skills. And we're also doing the student listening sessions. And it's open to every student, and we're going to get feedback from them to improve our community as well. And we're also doing the voter registration drive, is partner with our local civic organizations. And we believe by educating our students, the civic rights, it will get students more involved in our community. Next slide. Thank you so much for having us. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Ms. Better Smith. What is Artie Idol?
So Artie Idol is one of our events, uh, during formerly Artichoke Pride Week, but now Artichoke Spirit Week. Uh, it's a singing competition based on American Idol.
How fun.
Ms. Davis, you could enter, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your great report. Glad to have you here. Moving on, let's turn to our faculty executive council report, Dr. Lisa Marcio.
Hello.
There you go.
Madam President, I will, uh, stick with the Queen's English tonight since we have not developed a, a foreign language. We'd like to speak together. I'm thinking maybe
Trouble because all of my foreign language expertise is Latin, so we Ah, there you go.
I translated Cicero's orations.
Well, then, I am woefully unprepared.
Yeah, so, so I, I got you on the Latin. Don't worry. Okay, so good to know. All right. Madam President, members of the board, chancellor, C E C colleagues, honored students, and guests, jumbo. One of my favorite guilty pleasures is The Daily Show, and specifically the, if you don't know, now you know segment. So I thought I would do a Maricopa-specific version to highlight the great work occurring at our colleges and with our faculty. For example, did you know that the automotive program at Glendale Community College was named one of the best by Auto News Foundation? According to the foundation, Professor Lyle Clark, Program Director, and Dr. Susan Campbell, Dean of Career and Technical Education, have created a poster child of programs that all schools should follow. They offer three of the best automotive OEM programs in the U.S. One of them is the Automotive Service Education Program, sponsored by General Motors and Chevrolet, GMC, Buick, and Cadillac dealerships. Another one is the Automotive Student Service Education Training Program, sponsored by Ford Motor Company and Ford and Lincoln dealerships. And the third is the Mopar College Automotive Program, sponsored by Chrysler, Jeep, Ram, and Dodge dealerships. GCC has over seventy new vehicles for use as working models, a two-persons part department with over five hundred catalog pages of parts, and the equipment to work on every vehicle, including electric vehicles. If you don't know, now you know. Did you know that Scottsdale School of Film and Theater has been named one of Variety's annual top film schools in North America for twenty-twenty-three? According to the article, Scottsdale School of Film and Theater gets aspiring artists behind the camera immediately. Certainly, we are academically rigorous, says Professor Bill True, Department Chair. What we were able to do is put those principles into practice from day one, day one of classes, and you're making things in your first semester. Students can typically make four to six short films in that two-year period. True notes that the students in its editing program are able to earn Avid Professional Certification, and its top-notch equipment includes Ari and Red cameras. Scottsdale's actually only one of two two-year colleges in the nation that are allowed to lease a Fisher Dolly, he says. By the time our students get out of here, they know how to act on set. They understand the jobs that are going to get them work next year and the year after, so they can eventually have the career they dream of. If you don't know, now you know. And to close out this episode of, if you don't know, now you know, I'd like to ask Dr. Jared Rethel, Estrella Mountain Biology Faculty, to join me at the podium. He, he's the tall one, if there's any confusion on Dr. Rethel. Thank you. All right, baby girl.
Sweepy. She had a busy day at Market Tuesday.
Oh, okay. All right. Did you know that Estrella Mountain has an Did you know that Australia Mountain has an animal ambassadors community outreach program? The student-led initiative is centered on raising ecological awareness and promoting sustainability across the valley. Founded in 2018, Dr. Rathal works alongside currently enrolled students and helps them develop leadership skills and a love for ecology through mentorship and service. The team maintains a collection of over 20 species of native and exotic reptiles, amphibians and anthropods that are utilized in educational outreach at local schools, public recreation centers and other nonprofits free of charge. As you can see, one of the ambassadors is here with me tonight. This is Helios. Helios is a five-year-old Australian bearded dragon. Let's see, she was adopted from the Phoenix Herpetological Society, their sanctuary. In 2022, 2023 alone, the ambassadors hosted over 400 groups of visitors and close to 900 guests during open lab hours on campus. Further, ambassadors contributed to 33 community events this year, reaching over an estimated 4,000 participants who were able to physically engage with the animals. This includes Community College Capital Day, Agua Fria STEMCon, Polis and Union and Luke Air Force Base Steam Night, Tristios Nature Festival and the NCCCD Earth Forward Conference, among many others. As of August 2023, Dr. Rathal has mentored 40 students in the program, leveraging funds from the Federal Work Study Program, the Western Alliance for the Expansion of Science Opportunity and the Works Internships Ready Community College Student Scholarship. Of the 40 students mentored, 39, 39 have graduated EMCC with their associate degree or on track to do so. Three of the alumni are now enrolled in the Graduate Veterinary Program at the U of A. One has gone on to earn her MS in Applied Biology at ASU Polytechnic. Okay, girl. One is a full-time lab tech at the EMCC Life Sciences Lab. Two are studying ecology at the University of Alaska Southeast. One has landed full-time employment with the Arizona Game and Fish, working on endangered Sonoran proghorn. Three were awarded all USA scholarships. If you don't know, now you know. And as for Helios here, I would like to take the liberty, as the FEC president, and Jared, if you would help me, of awarding Helios an honorary PhD in human behavior, based on her seminal dissertation topic of, why do humans do that? So here is her hat. And if you would like to crown her.
She is gonna get extra mealworms and crickets tomorrow.
There you go. And she has her, there you go. And I will close as she's getting dressed with a haiku. If you don't know, now you've learned. Wisdom does grow, truth's light begins to glow. And we have, is she dressed?
She is looking.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Lisa, thank you. But I am still, I'm curious to know about these snake feedings every Friday, so, because I have the advantage of having a flyer advertising snake feedings every Friday.
Would you like to, you could ask for you.
Jared could.
We, yeah, we have, we maintain an open lab every Friday between 12:00 and 5:00 p.m. It's just to get students back on campus. And yeah, post-pandemic, it was so awesome today to see, pull up and get parking lots full and students all over campus again. But yeah, it's no reservations, totally free of charge, come watch the snakes eat. But it is live mice, so be prepared for that. I know the kids, they don't eat broccoli. Yep, all are welcome. Thank you.
And we have flyers, we'll leave some here if anyone thinks they're.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your attention.
And now we have Ms. Kim Boje from the Adjunct Faculty Situation Report, and I think I have bungled your name and I apologize for that.
Mrs. Bitter Smith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez. Unfortunately, Kim Boje had some car trouble leaving South Mountain and is not unfortunately able to be here today. My apologies for not informing you sooner.
Well, actually, no worries because the full report is attached to the agenda, so we can read her report, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the staff representation. Those folks I know are here, Mr. DeVal and Ms. Coulson.
April, welcome.
Hey. Good evening, Ms. Bitter Smith, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, college presidents, CEC students, colleagues and guests. Next slide, please. Today, we are representing our district reps. I'm just gonna name them real quick. Jordan Woodruff is our staff senator for the district office. Casey Takata, Kaylee Howell are exempt council members. Next slide, please. Ryan Melzerick, Michaela Ballard and Victor Reyes are non-exempt staff members.
So as we leave the peak period of August and we enter September, we start getting a lot of data in of how we did during the August peak and how we're doing to begin the fall period. And we've had a lot of staff bring forward data and show us exactly what was going on. So just a couple of quick numbers, District Contact Center. Financial aid was very proud that they had over 10,700 calls coming in. Mesa Community College, their contact center saw a huge increase, had over 4,000 calls coming in with a 96% handle rate. These are numbers that are representative of the type of student engagement we have coming in and our frontline staff are really doing a great job of helping them. And looking at the numbers really motivates staff and they get to see their impact and the increase of student engagement, the increase of students coming back onto the campuses and watching the enrollment go up. So congratulations to the great job staff continue to do on the front lines. Next slide, please. Finally, we just want to point out that April and I are touring all the campuses. We started this month. We are visiting with all the college presidents, so if you haven't seen us yet, we're pretty close right behind you. So we're also meeting with HR directors, the local staff reps. This gives us an opportunity to really get, understand what's going on the local campuses. It allows us to really get a pulse on what's going on and see all the good work that's going on the local campuses. We do a lot of driving, but it is well worth it. And so I wanted to thank all the college presidents for being very welcoming. They do a great job of making time to speak with April and myself and really talk to us about what's going on on their campus, if there's anything that we can do to assist leadership, because we think that staff's voice is important to be there with the college presidents. So thank you, college presidents, for that. Next slide. And as normal, if you want to get ahold of us, there is one other slide there with our contact info. So thank you.
Any questions? If not, we know how to get ahold of you because you give us the contact information.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. Item number eight is the Emeritus Awards and Recognition. And tonight we have three. And if you would come forward as I call your name and the college president would come with you to proceed to the podium, let's start with Lori Lang at Mesa Community College. And it's ready. How many times you do this, you're still getting nervous. Mrs. Bitter Smith, board, governing board, CEC members, students and our wonderful community, I would like to present to you Emeritus Faculty, Ms. Lori Yang. Okay, so I'm gonna re, just clap for her.
Give me a quick moment just to give you a big, a brief synopsis of her career with us. Lori has been employed with MCCD as a board-approved employee for over 33 years. She was hired as a residential faculty at Mesa in 2008 after teaching as an adjunct for several years. Lori accomplishments include planning and organizing fashion shows for program students to display their work. These events raised as much as $7,000 annually due to ticket sales and silent auctions. Lori served as the Fashion Program Director during the COVID pandemic when all fashion classes were successfully converted to live online or fully online instruction. She also oversaw, oversaw the design of and moved to the newly furnished classrooms in the Business Department Building. Lori has been instrumental in the building of one of the largest higher-end fashion programs in the state of Arizona here at MCC. And you know, and again, we highly recommend her for the honor of faculty emeritus. And with that, I'd like to present you with this, which is a certificate from us, a letter from our chancellor. Let me just read what it says. I always think it's wonderful. Dr. Gonzalez, I will take this quick liberty. And this is, Dear Lori, congratulations on being awarded Faculty Emeritus Distinction. On behalf of the governing board and the entire district, I wish to congratulate you and honor you for your dedication and accomplishments in teaching and learning during your long and distinguished career as a faculty member with the Maricopa Community College District. I thank you for your distinguished service and the legacy you have left for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And thank you, board members, president. It is an honor to receive such an honor and I didn't expect to speak or address you. I won't go on and on, but it has just been a wonderful career. More than half my life is spent at the Maricopa Community College is. I also worked at Rios Lotto briefly in the district office in my career. So I've had a wide breadth of knowledge of employees across the community colleges and, and many, many, many students. At our height in our program, we had over 450 students. So we built quite a large program at Mesa Community College. So I thank you so much for this honor and I don't know what to say, but thank you. It's very much.
Congratulations, Lori.
We'll see you in January.
Thank you. I'll be back in January. And then we have two from Chandler Gilbert. Right, let's start with Dr. Karen Reader.
Board Member Bitter Smith, board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, all guests gathered tonight. I have the privilege and honor of rivalry, rivaling Helios's honorary degree tonight by presenting two faculty for Emeritus status, to amazing faculty. This is, I've been at Chandler Gilbert for five years now and so these are my colleagues. It's such an amazing event to see the impact they've had on the college as they move on. But we decided that their peers would be better suited to speak to their talents and contributions. And so Dr. Scott Silverman is here tonight to speak on behalf of Dr. Reader.
Board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues and friends, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Karen Reader. We have been friends and colleagues for, gosh, the better part of a quarter century. I was asked to speak for two minutes or less and I thought it would be easier to speak to what Karen hasn't done in a two-minute period than what you have accomplished. There's just so much to say. Karen earned her doctorate degree at Arizona State University while raising four children. Three of them are here today. She worked as a school psychologist. She worked adjunct teaching for Mesa Community College later as one semester only and a one-year-only. We were eventually able to get her on full-time at Chandler Gilbert Community College, where she remained for nearly two decades, teaching multiple classes, including statistics, developmental psychology, abnormal psychology. Karen was one of the early leaders and pioneers in online learning and instruction. And I have to admit, I didn't get that at first. I was thinking, students need to be in a classroom, but this generation, that is their style of learning. And Karen was on to that early and it turned out to be a good thing for all of us. The leadership that she's shown in this district and at our college, it, the list just goes on and on, from Quality Matters, Web Advisory Group, E-Learning Coordinator, Psychology District Instructional Council, Faculty Senate, Staffing Committee, Learnings and Outcomes, Peer Assistance and Review Committee, Psychology Lead Faculty, Curriculum Committee, Guided Pathways Steering Committee. I probably missed a few, right? No, there's many, many more. Quite an accomplished career, well-deserving of this honor. On a more personal level, Karen is kind, compassionate, caring, well-liked by her students, by her colleagues. So even though her name is Karen, I can assure you, she's no Karen. Does not fit that stereotype. We are so blessed to be able to honor her this way. She is well-deserving of this highest honor in academic's Emeritus status and I thank you for your time and Karen, I congratulate you.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Peterson and Dr. Silverman for this honor tonight and especially for the board, the distinguished board and chancellor here. I'd like to thank another wonderful colleague and friend, Alyssa Bear, who nominated me for this distinction and got this rolling. I'm grateful to win call for giving me my first opportunity to teach at MCC as an adjunct professor and then as a OSO and an OYO faculty member there in the late 1990s and early 2000s. And it was at MCC that I was first trained to teach online by their wonderful CTL at the time. They had a great, well-developed CTLA. I'd also like to, to acknowledge Dr. Mary McGlasson, who worked closely with me through my years of developing and training and mentorship and online and hybrid teaching at the college and the district level. And who knew that online teaching and learning would be our only mode in March of 2020 when the pandemic hit? So I'm so glad that we were able to, the district was able to fund and develop and encourage online learning and teaching because we were prepared and that was really a pretty smooth transition for most of us. Lastly, I would like to thank my family for their love and support for me as I pursued my doctoral degree. I actually had classes with Dr. Silverman at, at ASU. We shared classes together. And for their love and support as I have had the last 25 years of, of my career in the field of psychology, both practicing and teaching. And I am very grateful for them. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And then Dr. Peterson, we have Virginia Edwards.
I just want to say, as we coyotes say, hell yeah. Virginia, come up. Again, another amazing faculty. One of the first faces I saw on campus as I joined Chandler Gilbert and her colleague, Dr. Nikki Neese, will be presented.
The students, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, distinguished guest. Although her youthful looks and energy might make it hard to believe, Virginia Edwards joined the residential faculty at Chandler Gilbert Community College in 1999, where she has served in numerous roles as a teacher, a mentor and a leader. Virginia started as an ESL faculty member, serving as the college's ESL coordinator for 12 years, division chair of Modern Languages and Humanities for six years, and chair of chairs for two years. From there, she joined the counseling program in 2019, where she assisted with the development and inaugural teaching of our first year of the new, first-year experience courses at our college. Beyond serving on, I think, pretty much every committee we had at Chandler Gilbert, Virginia also had the opportunity, part of the Faculty of Color Recruitment and Retention District Committee for four years. She enjoyed representing the Hispanic community by participating in several events such as the Hispanic Heritage Committee and the City of Chandler festivals. So keeping familia close to heart, always. Throughout her career, Virginia has always been steadfast in her, steadfast in her commitment to her students and their success and helping them find their sense of belonging at Chandler Gilbert. As the key contributor to our college and to the community for the better part of a quarter century, on behalf of her fellow counseling, fellow counseling faculty, it is my honor to present Professor Virginia Edwards with a Samaritan recognition. Thank you have done for all of us.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, chancellor, board and the presidents here. I am so grateful and honored to have this distinction after 24 years of teaching at Chandler Gilbert Community College. It's been an enjoyable and just a wonderful career that I've It's been an enjoyable and just a wonderful career that I've had. If you were to tell me in 1988 that I would be able to have a job like at a community college, being a faculty member, I would not have believed it. In 1988, I was a single mom of three kids, and I put myself through school. Two of my children and grandchildren are here, and my son-in-law. And so that was something that I felt I needed to do in order to provide for my family. I drove 15 minutes down the road, walked into Chandler Gilbert, and just said, I would like to enroll in classes. And it was the most wonderful experience that I had. The staff, the faculty there, the way they mentored the students, and how they made you feel like you could do it. You could make it was just phenomenal. And who would know that 10 years later, in 1999, I would be teaching at a community college and spend a wonderful 24 years there that I am just so happy to have had because it was a wonderful career. So for the students that are here, you never know where you're going to be in 10 years. And when you look back, it's going to be like, wow, if somebody would have told me that then, I probably wouldn't have believed it. So I want to thank you all so much for this honor of having this Samaritan distinction. I really, really am grateful for that. Thank you.
And again, hell yeah.
Congratulations. Dr. Gonzalez, I think we're ready for your report.
Thank you, Board Members, Bitter Smith, remaining governing board members here this evening, faculty, staff, administration, and guests who are with us. Just a few items to report. Early in the month, we had some visitors for our, as part of our League for Innovation affirmation. Our board members were active in that process. And so were our college presidents and many other faculty and staff who shared the many wonderful innovations that are going on throughout our system. In the month of October, I'll be attending a board meeting for the League for Innovation, and that's when the vote will take place. I think we're going to be okay. I don't want to jinx anything. But I just want to say I'm really proud of what we saw and the level of participation at all levels, including our governing board here. As you are all familiar, we are currently in the process of some searches at the executive level. Today, we wrapped up our public forums for our Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost search and awaiting information from that process as we finalize the decision there. And, you know, we're continuing with our CIO search process and our COO search process. And so the stabilization of our organization continues at the executive level. Today, I had an opportunity to be back at my home campus at Gateway. And there was a really, really good event that took place there. We heard a summary of the HOPE survey results that had been administered in January of 2023, where nearly 6,000 Maricopa students participated in the survey. And we learned about some of the basic needs and challenges that our students possess while they are students with us. We had probably at least 150 people in attendance. I understand that there was also a student panel that presented and got to share firsthand some of the experiences that they've had. But I'm happy to report that we had members from our district office. We had faculty, staff, and college presidents from every college in the system who spent time in a copper room hearing about the results. And then even better, they then gathered at tables according to their college, and they dissected some of the data and talked about how we can better respond as a system. I didn't get to stay there for that part, but I knew that that was going to happen. But that's time well spent. And when we talk about meeting students where they are, we need to have the data in front of us to know exactly where they are. We have 140,000 to 160,000 students. We can't get to every single one and ask them what's on their mind and how they're doing. But the 6,000 was a strong representation of our students and very compelling data. And so as I'm saying this, I'm thinking that the results of that survey could be a good informational session for this board so that you're able to learn who our typical student is. The other thing that I was thinking about here tonight, and maybe I'd envisioned a big celebration, a big party, and a dozen roses or something. But just about a year ago today, I was moved from the interim chancellor to the permanent chancellor. And what I was really thinking is about how fast the time went. It's been a year. And I was reflecting through this meeting on some of the things that have happened this past year, things that we're really proud of, things that I'm proud to be a part of and that I'm proud of the people of Maricopa who work in Maricopa that have made these things happen. And in particular, the successful rollout of our bachelor's degrees. You know, to have nearly 2,000 students enrolled in seven bachelor's degrees across our system when just three years ago, we didn't know what a single bachelor's degree we would be offering. It's just amazing work. And most of those students, from my understanding, are brand-new to Maricopa. So that means that we're tapping into a population of people out there who are just really waiting for us to have a high-quality, low-cost option to complete their bachelor's degree. And of course, more work to come there. It had also been 15 to 16 years since Maricopa had looked at its mission, vision, and values. While they were likely still relevant, it was time to, you know, put the mirror up to ourselves and to ask the community as well and to ask our students, how could we better serve the community? How could we better serve our students? And we completed a strategic planning process where we had input from anyone who wanted to participate in that. We had strong support and participation and engagement from our governing board. We are extremely appreciative of that on the employee side of the organization. And so we have a mission, vision, and values. The cool thing about our vision is that it fits on the back of a T-shirt. And we know that because I have a shirt with their vision on it now. So we're really happy with that. And, you know, we continue to stabilize leadership, as I mentioned. And then the other thing to think about is, that I was thinking about is how much personal and professional growth that we've all had in Maricopa. We've come out of this pandemic stronger because of it. And I think that we're a much better organization, more in tune with one another, more in tune with our students. And today's conversation around the basic needs was strong evidence of that. So I'm really looking forward to the continued work that we're doing here in Maricopa and so on, or to lead. And then I'm also happy to report that in, this is our fourth or fifth semester, consecutive semester, including summers, where we are seeing an increase in enrollment. Right now, we're up between 4% and 5%. So we're doing something right. We need to continue to make up the ground that we lost from the pandemic. But again, I'm proud of our faculty and staff, and especially those that are on the front line of ensuring that our students are aware of the opportunities and resources available to them as they are Maricopa students. So thank you so much, everybody out there who's here today, who's out listening to the millions worldwide that are listening now. We're proud of the work here at Maricopa. That concludes my report, Mrs. Bitter Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. I am delighted to hear you want to celebrate that one year with flowers and cake and not something else. So.
All good.
We can move on to citizens' interim. I have no cards for anyone to speak. So with that, we will now then move on to the consideration of the consent agenda. All items under the section of the agenda are consent matters unless they were moved from the consent agenda at this time. Board members, I do want to draw your attention to one additional consent agenda item, number 24, that was posted in timely fashion for tonight's agenda. Yeah, I think you are all aware of it. But let me ask if you have, anyone wants to remove any item for further discussion or questions from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? By a vote of five plus a student advisory vote, the consent agenda is approved. Then let's move on to the non-consent agenda action items, starting with item number one, which is the second read and adoption of the Governing Board Policy Changes 4.9, Board Committee Structure. I know we have talked about this in Agenda Review. Is there a motion to approve the revised Board Policy 4.9, Board Committee Structure as presented? Moved by Dr. Thor. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Butler. Board members, is there any discussion on this item? Dr. Thor, anything you want to add?
No, I think we've talked.
About it. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries again by a vote of five plus the student advisory vote, and the listed policy amendments are adopted. Item number two on the non-consent action items, approval of two Memorandums of Understanding, otherwise known as MOUs, for the 2023-2024 Faculty Agreement. The first MOU is to revise Article 10.33, the Full-Time Initial Salary Placement, Nursing Faculty Minimum Qualifications, and Faculty Initial Salary. And number two is an MOU to revise Article 7.2.3, the Faculty Agreement for Faculty Leadership, Academic Faculty Chair Training Requirements. Is there a motion to approve the two new MOUs as presented?
So moved.
By Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Narini. Board members, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? By a vote of five plus the student advisory vote, both the two new MOUs are adopted. Okay, then let's move on to the first read and information items. And again, this will be coming back to us for action at a future meeting. The first read of the Governing Board Policy Changes to 2.4 Financial Condition and Activities. I know we have talked about this, but are there any questions from the board? If not, item number two is the first read of New Board Policy 4.1, Shared Governance Principles, replacing the previous Board Policy 4.1, dealing with that same issue, governing values. Again, board members, any questions? Seeing none, item number three is the first read of Governing Board Policy Changes to 4.11, Awarding of Emeritus Status. Any questions from the board? Nope. Item number four, and the Employment and Separations Report from July 15, 2023 through August 11, 2023. Again, board members, any questions? With that, let's move on to the monitoring reports. And under that, we have the Budget Analysis Report Fund I, General Unrestricted Fund for the two months ending 8/31/2023. Board members, questions? Again, seeing none. We are coming then to the end of our agenda for this evening, starting with the Community Linkage Reports. Mr. Burnett, anything to report?
Just a few events. Attended the CGCC Job Fair, which is fantastic. They had it in the Student Center. Very active food. It was, and I'm sure most of the colleges are doing it. I've not been invited by any of the other college presidents, but hoping to get invited. But it was fantastic. It's good to see the student, faculty, student life putting on something that it's going to, that benefits the students. Attended the first senate meeting. And a bunch of the senators are here now. The senate chair, Beck, is here, as well as some of the other senators, Scott and Amelda. And it's a fantastic group of young people who are chomping at the bit to do something impactful. And I think when we go to Vegas, we're going to have some good conversations about how we can help that happen, make that students' senate even more functional and help them move forward, step on their shoulders and continue to move forward. So I'm excited about working with the senate this year. Also, I think a bunch of us were at, I don't know, a bunch of us, but several of us were at Phoenix College for Mr. Spicker's Award. And that was the 74th Man of the Year. It was pretty fantastic. They nailed him, totally surprised him. He never saw it coming. It was really, really good. And he's very humble in his acceptance, but it was a great. And I don't know if I was supposed to say that or not. I think it's already been released, right?
You're safe. It's been announced.
Okay, thank you. Man, I knew I was going to get kicked off or something. And then we've got ACCT coming up. I'm very excited about that in Las Vegas tonight through the 12th. So that should be a great time. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Butler?
Thank you. I, the only thing I've been able to work on this, this month, has been helping with the Heroes of Education event, the foundation event. Want to make sure you all know it's coming up in November, on November 16th at 5:30 at the Phoenix Art Museum. And we've been working as a foundation to establish sponsorships and appreciate our co-chair, Ms. Bitter Smith, as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler, and thank you for the promotion of the event. It will be great. So if you've not bought tickets, please talk to Kelly or myself. Ms. Davis?
Ms. Bitter Smith, I attended the dinner for the league, with the League of Innovation members. And I really didn't know much about that before we went to the dinner. And I didn't realize that they were there to ask us questions. And of course, I knew like absolutely nothing, really. But the good news about this whole thing was the report that they put together for the league was amazing. And it had everything you ever wanted to know about any of our community colleges was in that report. And I told the chancellor when I walked in the door, we need to give this report to brand-new board members because it had everything in it that you can imagine. I think we all learned stuff from that report. I also went to Brian Spicker's Man of the Year event. I've known Brian for a really long time. I worked with him at United Way many years ago. So it was great to be there to celebrate him. And the feedback that I got was that you could tell that the chancellor was a wrestler because he pushed Brian into the room. And then finally, I want to talk about a press conference event that I went to last week for my paid job with Education Forward Arizona. But it was hosted at South Mountain Community College with my friend, Richard Daniels. And it was hosted in the construction area of the college. And that, I was amazed at how much that program has grown. Kelly, you should have seen it from when we were there. It's amazing. And now they have a waitlist for students to get in there. So it was really a good event, and thank you, Richard, for hosting, hosting the event. But it was, it was wonderful to go back and see the growth of that, of that program. So thank you for hosting it. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Narini?
Yeah, my month was, was exciting. Started on August 30th when I went to Phoenix College for the Native American Blessing to start off the school year. And then I want to thank Shanna Mata from Paradise Valley for inviting me to the first-generation luncheon. She didn't know she was inviting me. Or she didn't know she was inviting a board member. She was just inviting a first-generation student because I had signed up for a class at Paradise Valley. And so she was just inviting a first-generation student to the luncheon. So I was going to crash it, but I thought I'd let her know that I was coming.
And you got a T-shirt.
And I got a T-shirt out of it. So that was even better. But I had to skip out a little bit early from the luncheon to attend the course fee committee. I want to thank Bettina and the crew for all the work that we've been doing on the course fees. There's lots of work that has been done, lots of work still needs to be done. And along those lines, I want to thank all the folks. I know it's kind of tedious. I ask a lot of questions. I send out all the questions to, to the staff when they, when they, when they request fees. And I know it's kind of tedious and it's time-consuming and all that sort of thing. But just so you know where I'm coming from, just, just think about it. Like a $50 fee for a class of 20 students working minimum wage, it's going to take them 100 hours to pay for that. So when I'm, when I'm nitpicky about some of this stuff, just know that I'm coming at it from what it's taking for the students to do this, you know, $50 after taxes. It's about five hours that they're going to have to work to pay that. So, yeah, when I, when I get to fees, that's where I'm nitpicking about the students having to work. I also attended the League of Innovation Dinner. That was, that was wonderful. Dr. Hernandez, I met her at the Glendale Chamber for their event to meet some of the folks in Glendale, introduce her to some of the people out in Glendale. Yesterday, I met with Mr. Boyd, our superintendent of the high schools that we have, just to kind of learn about some of the differences of running a high school while you're, you know, while you're on a college. And some of the things that they're doing, some of the stuff, some of the wonderful things that are going on with the students there, too. That was neat. But the toughest assignment I had was also yesterday when I had to go assess Gateway's massage therapy program. It took an hour. And I was on the table the whole time. So it was a lot of fun. And that concludes my report. Oh, but speaking of Gateway and Plugging Events, this Friday is the runway to. Oh, but speaking of Gateway and Plugging Events, this Friday is the runway to success. So if you haven't got your tickets, there might be one or two left. So please, please go.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Dr. Thor?
There's some redundancy in our reports tonight. I also attended the September 9th dinner with the reaffirmation team from the League for Innovation in the community college. And I think you should be pretty confident going into that meeting next month. I also will be in Las Vegas for the ACCT Leadership Congress along with most of the board. And we're delighted that Lynn Burnett is joining us this year. And I will be presenting a session with Dr. Gonzalez on how Maricopa is addressing the nursing shortage. I'm glad we don't have to give it tonight. We're not quite ready, but we will be. Finally, I'd like to give a shout out to Rio Salado College, which had a remarkable month in August. On one day, August the 24th, the college learned that it had won five awards from three different organizations. CALE, which is the Council for Adult and Experiential Learning, awarded Rio its Adult Learner Impact Award for its efforts to build innovative partnerships that integrate basic education, workforce training, and career services. And CALE also awarded Rio student Don Way the 2023 Learner of the Year Award nationally. Rio's institutional research team won the WCET, which is the Western Cooperative for Educational Technologies, the WOW Award for RioPAC, which stands for Persistence and Completion Tracking. RioPAC analyzes students' level of engagement and their coursework, academic progression, and selected demographic characteristics to create predictive analytics for student success. Finally, this is all one day. The chancellor and I kept getting these messages from President Kate Smith saying, I just got another one. Finally, the Arizona Association for Lifelong Learning named Rio's English Language Acquisition for Adults student, Bernabe Santiago Gonzalez, the ELAAR-LA Student of the Year Award. And finishing out that remarkable day, Dr. Tamara Cochran, who's Rio's Dean of Instruction and Community Development, received the Award of Excellence from the Arizona Association for Lifelong Learning. Quite a day. Congratulations to the Rio team. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Well, as Dr. Thor mentioned, there is some redundancy in events. And I too joined board members at the League of Innovation Reaffirmation Dinner. However, my dinner partner was Dr. Rudy Glasberg. So I had a great download of history that was worth the entire trip to get that one-to-one interchange with, with Dr. Glasberg. And as many board members, and will be joining them at the ACCT meeting in Las Vegas, we are presenting a panel on the Public Affairs Committee. And we're not quite ready yet either, quite frankly. But we will be because we have a lot to talk about the success of this district legislatively and making some significant changes in joint companionship with our GR team, with all of our faculty and staff, and with the board. So I'm looking forward to that. So with that, that concludes the community linkage reports. I have a couple of just announcements about next meeting dates and times and places. Starting with October 17 will be our work session regarding course fees. Dr. Narini will be there, probably with a different T-shirt on, but I'm sure ready. And then we will also have an agenda review. All of that starts at 4:30. And this is in a different timeframe because most of us will be at the ACCT meeting and the normal week would have our agenda review and work session. On October 24th, in person, we'll have a work session regarding the Graham Leach-Blyle Act at 5:30, followed by our governing board meeting at 6:30. And unless I have missed something, those are the next two meetings we have on our agenda. I have no further business. So seeing none of that, I am empowered now, according to my script, during the meeting. So drive safely home. Thank you.